This is the Duluth Public Schools ISD 709. It is Tuesday, March 15th, the Ides of March. So, all of us that taught Shakespeare for a lot of years might always remember that date. So, again, we welcome you too as our community to Denfeld High School. This is our temporary school board site. And so, we're really glad to have community here. And so, the first thing on the agenda is for our Clerk Oswald to take role. Thanks for coming.
Member Eater?
Here.
Member Kirby?
Here.
Member Lauthler Kemp?
Here.
Chair Lofol?
Here.
Member Oswald? Here I am. Member Sadowski?
Here.
Member Sandholm?
Here.
Superintendent Magus?
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Erickson?
Here.
HR Director Severance?
Here.
Secretary Paquette?
Here.
Secretary Carroll? Excuse. Excuse, she comes to committee of the whole meetings. And Denfeld Rep Soraya Crawford?
Here.
And East Rep Eileen Naus?
Here.
Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright. We have a form check.
Again, thank you. And it would be remiss if we didn't celebrate too that we were delightful to hear the ordine East Orchestra under the direction of Kevin Heschin. And so, we really appreciate and celebrate March in our schools month. So, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And also, as you noticed, one of the things that we can do if a board member can't be here in person, if we, in our board book, put down where their location is. State statute says that a board member can attend a regular school board meeting via an internet or technology. So, we welcome Member Lauthler Kemp as she is doing some family work with a daughter that moved to Colorado. So, we're glad you're here tonight, Rosie. I'm looking for a motion to approve our agenda.
So, move.
We have Member Eater with the motion and Member Sandholm with the second. All those in favor of approval of our agenda tonight, say aye.
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 Opposed? Our agenda is approved on a seven oh vote. Our next item is item number five, and it's school or committee recognition. So, I always turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds. Welcome. Thanks for coming tonight.
And good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening, year one. It's good to be here in person. And I want to say this is, well, maybe the first or second time without masks, but it's just really nice to be able to see smiling faces. And I appreciate everyone being here. And I'm really excited about today's recognition. So, I'll begin. Tonight, I would like to recognize two Denfeld High School students who went above and beyond to help out a community member. On March 4th, Brendan Hughes and Dominique Brennan were sitting in Mrs. Wicklund's fourth hour Business and Family Finance class when they looked out the window and noticed that a neighbor was shoveling his roof. His ladder failed while doing this. Brendan and Dominique asked if they could help. Mrs. Wicklund let them off. The gentleman who lives on 41st Street and West stopped at the school the next day to thank the students. Unfortunately, he didn't know who they were. When he did try to ask who these students were when they were present, they said, "We're just good Samaritans." And the students ran back to school. So, tonight, we want to thank Brendan and Dominique for their efforts. It is truly an honor when students go above and beyond to help their neighbors. And it is, it also exemplifies all of the efforts that goes on in the school. I know for a fact that in the community, sometimes Denfeld, you know, is a school that has a lot of good things going on, and our students are not always recognized for doing the right things. And these students did the right thing. So, I want to compliment Brendan, who is here today. Unfortunately, Dominique was not able to make it because he has hockey practice and there's a hockey tournament. So, we want to congratulate him.
As I watch school board meetings across the state, there's not many school board meetings on a regular basis that has our number five, and it's school and community recognition. And as the years I've been on the board, it has just been such a pleasure to recognize students, or recognize groups, or teams, to recognize staff, support staff, to recognize even our community partners that make everything work so well. So, I'm proud of ISD 709 for putting this in the agenda to celebrate every month, you know, a variety of celebrations that we can do. So, thanks to Assistant Superintendent Bonds that kind of heads that, as well as our Communication Director Adele Wellens, also known as Adele Whitefoot. So, thank you. That leads us to number six, our public comment. And so, tonight, we'll have public comment. And I'm going to ask for, Member Eater, will you read our civility? And then, Member Oswald has our guidelines for public comment. And again, that's a part of our community that, our agenda that we enjoy and want our community to come and share some celebrations, concerns, and things that we need to hear. So, we're glad you're here tonight for that public comment.
So, we have a community vision and priorities for the Duluth schools. We will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievement, and responsible use of resources to create the Duluth Public Schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world. So, we have 11 tools of civility. This school board recognizes 11 tools of civility that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. These tools include, first, pay attention, listen, be inclusive, don't gossip, show respect, be agreeable, apologize, give constructive criticism, take responsibility, be honest and care for others, and show your evidence, share your reasoning.
Thank you. And then, Member Oswald will just review the guidelines.
Public comment information. Information to know when you sign up to speak at board meetings, persons wishing to address the school board must sign in prior to the meeting, listing their name and the matter on which you will speak. If you have any handouts for the board, please give them to the school board secretary over at that table. Persons addressing the board will speak in the order in which they signed up. Each person addressing the board will have three minutes total. When speaking, use names or any, use of names or any information that identifies a specific individual is legally prohibited, and you will be asked to end your comments. Persons addressing the board may not merge their time in order to allow one person to speak for more than three minutes. The clerk of the board, me, will start the stoplight timer there at the start of each person's time. A green light means go, a yellow light means start wrapping up, a red light means stop. When the red light comes on, the chair will gavel to signal you to end. Persons addressing the board shall confine their comments to matters pertaining to the agenda or relevant to matters of administrative concern. And in the interest of respect for each public comment speaker, please hold any commentary during the speaker's time until they are finished.
Thank you. With that, our first speaker is Wendy Turecy?
Ture. I have never spoken at a school board meeting before, so if I do anything that is not proper, please excuse me.
And you can either sit or stand.
I'm going to stand. Thank you so much. I would like to say thank you to all of the board members, the administration, colleagues, parents that might be here, students, and Brendan, is that your name?
Brendan.
Brendan, I'm sorry. This is why we're here. You are the reason why we're here, as a staff and as a school board. And I believe that that is why you ran for the school board, because you care about kids. One of the things I would like to address is in your, I'm sorry, excuse me, it's really dry in here. In your opening before I talked, you said something about the responsible use of funds. That is a huge concern for me as a teacher in this district. I have been a teacher for over 30 years. I have worked in three school districts. This is my last district. I've been here for 25 years. And in the time I've been in this district, I have seen an increase in administrative positions. I have seen teachers taken out of the classroom. I have seen things go away from the students, but yet, there's still more and more administrative positions. I have been a foster parent. I have been trained through some mental health training. I was a special ed teacher for 13 years. I worked at Unity. I have a variety of experience with at-risk students. And so, I wanted to work with that population again. And I applied in this district for a couple jobs as dean of students. I was turned down because I did not have an administrative license, or was not working toward an administrative license. So, I was not allowed to be considered for that position. And I applied for two different ones. That concerns me. If we are here for the kids, we need to put that money, we need to put money into the kids. The kids are our focus. You are the reason why we are here. You are why we do what we do. And we need to show that. We need to stand on that. There needs to be some changes. It really concerns me. We still have class sizes that do not allow us to deal with students as individual as we would like to, to help them in the way that we would like to. I try to get around and move around to my students. I am blessed right now because I have a student teacher, which affords me a little more opportunity to get around and sit with kids and help them. When I'm by myself in a class of over 30 kids, it is hard to reach all the kids that I want to in a class period. So, I am asking that we take a look at this. The other thing I want you to know is that as a teacher, I have given up sick time. I have given up 13 days of sick time for COVID. I worked from home. I looked at emails. I planned lessons because I did not plan on being gone. I corrected. I did what I could do to keep up with my job. And I do appreciate the fact that there has been the step to provide some back, but that was three hours out of my day. And I spent almost a full school day many times doing work from home while I was homesick with COVID. So, I just want to thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. Thank you very much.
We had a temporary glitch in our timing, but I think we're good. Our next speaker is Jim Olson.
I'm passing out something that went out to elementary QLT. I'm going to be focusing.
Should go to Patty.
Oh, you guys don't want.
We want it. She'll give it to us. That's where it goes.
Oh, thank you. I'm going to be focusing my comments from the presence section, but I'd appreciate it if you spent the time to look at what's happened in the past and in the goals for the future. The current contractual language regarding elementary prep time, an elementary teacher should receive prep time for four days a week outside of the student day and 45 minutes of prep time during the student day once a week. Twice a month administrative call meetings are held during prep time outside of the student day. Based on the 2021-2022 school calendar, the calculated prep time has a mean of 50.8 minutes of prep time a day. In December of 2021, 41 elementary teachers responded to a survey to provide feedback on prep time. Every elementary building was represented in the responses. 41.5% of the respondents were classroom teachers, 29.3% were elementary specialists, which would be art, media, physical education, or music, and 29.2% were other educators like interventionists, special education teachers, social workers, et cetera. The results of the survey indicated that elementary teachers are not receiving this prep time. The primary factors that were infringing on elementary prep time were meetings being scheduled during prep time, assigned duties from principals that cannot be completed before prep time starts, and the 45-minute, once-a-week prep time was only being built into classroom teacher schedules. Respondents reported 27% of the prep time outside of the student day was filled with other meetings. Respondents reported 47% of the principal-assigned duties infringed on prep time. Using data from the survey results, the mean prep time was reduced from 50.8 minutes a day to a mean of 39 minutes a day. The pertaining of a language from Minnesota State Statute 122A.50, quote, "Within the student day, for every 25 minutes of classroom instructional time, a minimum of five additional minutes of preparation time shall be provided to each licensed teacher. Preparation time shall be provided in one or two uninterrupted blocks during the student day." Based on the statute, which the administration wanted to adopt for middle school and high school, but not elementary schools, elementary teachers should receive a minimum of 66 minutes of prep time based on our contracted 330 minutes of daily instructional time and the statute's 25 to 5 ratio. On paper, this means that elementary teachers are receiving 77% of the state's minimum daily prep time. This represents a shortfall 15 minutes of prep time a day and 43 hours of missed prep time in a school year. In practice, this means that elementary teachers are only receiving 58% of the state's minimum daily prep time. This represents a shortfall of 28 minutes of prep time a day and 79 hours of missed prep time a year. I ask this board to continue to support the labor management process so that we can remedy these problems. Thank you.
It's a gentle tap.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Kim Ladue.
Take my glasses off. Thank you, members of the school board and administration, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Kim Ladue, and I've been with the Duluth School District and Duluth Clerical 692-8 for 19 years. I've designed websites, trained teachers and staff in technology, was the lead clerical in the payroll, often working by myself, and I'm currently the lead in the Finance Department in the Accounts Payable Department. My husband has been with the district for over 25 years, and both of our kids, both of us are products of ISD 709, as well of our, as well of our kids. We've had a very challenging two years, and our world is very different. I'm here tonight to thank you for your support and ask that we continue to work together during this time during negotiation sessions. My unit has been on the front lines during the change in in-person to distance learning to hybrids and so on. We've seen a large turnover in staff, in staffing move to other positions. It has been a struggle to recruit new employees, but the work still needs to get done, and our veteran staff have often needed to cover multiple sites or departments. It's not sustainable, but the district relies on enrollments, class schedules, and our organization that we provide. The payroll has to get done. Deposits have to be made. Bills have to be paid on time. Ask any administrator or principal who has lost a clerical over the last two years how it's affected their areas. Experienced, dependable, professional staff is an asset to the flow of the district. Training in new staff takes time, availability, cooperation to organize and developing quality training. The last two years, we've thrown new staff into the school offices with no one there to help them. I've trained and mentored them on my own over the last many years due to short staffing in my department I simply couldn't. All student activities were moved to the Finance Department, and my partner moved to another department. So, I've been working alone since May of last year as your only accounts payable person. So, it didn't allow me time to mentor and train new clerical the way that I used to. So, we took away two full-time AP people and added all of the student activities that were once handled out at the schools is now falling all on me. And I was not allowed to work overtime. So, it's very stressful. Many of my other departments and sites have had similar situations, and no applicants are applying for our jobs. Ask, since 2003, our clerical staff has dropped by half while the city population has grown. Even if the students are not attending ISD 709, we still have to provide services, track enrollments for homeschool, and special education services. This is all work that's done by your clerical. The volume of work does not go down. It grows. The mental health, mental health of all staff district-wide has been tested, and many balancing on just a thin line. During the upcoming sessions, I hope that we're able to come together and collaborate on resources and languages that allow clerical to function at the high level of professionalism that makes ISD 709 a place where people want to send their kids and staff want to stay. There are, these are your office managers, tasked with demands and duties. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
And again, if our public comment contributors want to share their message, if you didn't get to finish it all, with our clerk or with our executive secretary, we certainly will welcome, you know, those, those papers. We've got one, and if there's others, we certainly can take that. So, thank you. That's our public comment for tonight. And again, we appreciate and celebrate that we are in person and able to have the opportunity to, instead of just reading your emails, of being able to hear your voices and share your concerns. So, we appreciate that. Next on our agenda is number seven. It's reading communications and petitions, and we've had none. And so, then, we're on to number 10. Nope, we're on to number eight. I can, I can read and have numbers. It's the report of the superintendent, and under that is three items. A is the reports from our student reps. B is our superintendent's report. And C is just a review for me on our scheduled meetings. Is there any questions or comments? Turning it over to Superintendent Magus.
Thank you. Really appreciate the opportunity. And I clicked on the school board meeting. I'm just trying to bring up the presentation slide here. But we have several topics tonight. And as you mentioned, we start off with our, our student reps, and we're really excited to hear our reports. Quite often, it's some of the highlight of the, the weekend and even month to hear some of the great things going on in our schools, as well as some of the struggles. But student voice is incredibly important to us. Then, we have a very brief update on the Central High School on the Hill, negotiations updates, some, a few safe learning updates, which is actually minimal this time, which is kind of refreshing, and then a brief, very brief update on strategic planning. But Soraya, would you like to start?
Alright. Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Soraya Crawford, the Denfeld Student Representative. And it's good to be here and see all of you. Alright, to start off with my report, I just want to say, as we're transitioning from winter to spring, I don't have much to report on, but here I go. Alright, first, I would like to say that we had a great orientation, and it went very well. It was highly attended, and I believe that a lot of students had fun. I was there, and it was great. Sorry if I seem too informal. Okay, next, our robotics team competed in Lake Superior Regional and were selected as an alliance in the playoffs and were given a judges award. I am super proud of them. They did, I, sorry. Okay, um, next. Speech team also had a recent competition and did great as well. One of our seniors, seniors, Tessa Schrader, won two championship medals. Junior Maddie Watts won a fourth-place medal. Sophomore Marley Bugbee, a ninth-place medal. Sophomore Ariel Logenschlager, a ninth place, another ninth-place medal. And freshman Reagan Kern earned a second-place medal. Boys hockey took second place in the Section 7A playoffs. Congratulations to them. Also, the Mental Wellness Club has been hatched and is taking flight once again. Ten participants are selected each week to take place in it, and it's been a really great program so far, and I am excited to see how it goes. We also had an assembly with our, where we announced to our athletic court King and Queen were, which were Annika Winberg and Jacob Gialano. Congratulations to them as well. Our choir and orchestra and band concerts, we had those last week, and those were really awesome. I hope you guys got to attend. And lastly, we had, well, we are ongoing registration with our guidance counselors for next year. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Crawford. And I might not do as well as Member Oswald, but Eileen Naus?
Naus.
Naus.
You got the first name. That's important.
I turned it into two syllables. I apologize.
It's all good. So, generally, our students and staff are happy with the end of the mask mandate, and although it's strange to see the faces of students and teachers, it's very refreshing. Association and Sources of Strength are continuing with their preparations for their Spirit Week, April 4th through the 8th. The Spirit Week will center around the support of students and seasons of change. Sources of Strength is selling popcorn at lunch on Fridays for $1 to raise funds for the training that they did earlier this year and to pay for their upcoming Spirit Week. Exec will be having a semi-formal dance at East connected with the April Spirit Week as a replacement for Harvest that is usually happens in the fall. So, instead, we'll be having Spring Flank. That is our most upcoming event, so most of our energy is being spent on that. But we're also planning red and gray for the week of May 9th through 13th. Association had some Pie Day festivities yesterday, including a pie memorization contest and a pie walk at lunch. Students had a great time trying to win some delicious pie. Hound Pack had their incoming freshman open house where student leaders gave tours and helped give information about different parts of the school. Our student leaders were even more important this, this year than previous years, as it was fairly short notice, so many teachers weren't able to be there. Hound Pack is also looking forward to their annual ice cream social at the end of the year to reconnect with the freshmen. Our students are also registering for next year's classes. I think it was last week everyone registered. Prom is also fast approaching, and the planning group, Prom Comm, has decided on a theme, but the theme has not been announced to the school yet. Everyone is really excited for a more normal prom this year, and the search for prom dresses is on. So, math team went to state yesterday, and I'm still waiting on a response as to how they did. Swim team also went to state recently and got 15th out of 43 teams as a team. And one swimmer, Grant Woodney, took first place in the 200 and 500 freestyle events. Senior Lauren Carlson on the Alpine Ski Team won the state, state title last month, and our basketball team is doing well and recently won against Blaine in the quarterfinals. Turnout to the quarterfinal game was impressive, and I think the team is well-supported by the high school and the community. They play against Andover today in the semifinal game. Many group leaders at East are looking to collaborate in order to get a four-way stop at the intersection just outside of the parking lot at East. Traffic before and after school is inefficient and dangerous for pedestrians and drivers. If you have any suggestions or insight on this, I would love your feedback. And I would also like to reiterate my concern that school lunches are not big enough, and students at East expect a response to this concern. Pretty much, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And we appreciate both of our student reports. Again, I think that the highlights that you're both sharing are really, really important to us, but then, and I should say, some of the concerns that you bring up are really valid, and we need to make sure that we're taking them into account. I'll let Mr. Bonds and others work on the lunch sizes, but regarding the four-way stop, we've done some work with the city on some, some of the other areas related to safety, and we'd be glad to extend some, some communication there as well, too. So, thank you. And really appreciate those, those reports. But the, again, on to our, the rest of our agenda, just a really quick update, and you, this has been shared publicly, and it's nothing new, but since this is our next board meeting, I just wanted to mention that we did receive notice that the sale of the Central on the Hill was, was terminated, and we're still planning on moving forward with demolition of Central. And I know that there are a lot of questions out there in the public about, you know, can we see it? Can we tour it? We, we, it's, it's not considered safe for the public at this, at this point, and, but we do want to consider, how are we communicating? Are there? Are there events we could maybe have, maybe a farewell event in the parking lot or something like that? Because we know how important Central is to so many people. But it's still for sale and we believe that there will be other offers. And we also wanted to say that that does not affect the historical Central sale, which finished in early February. Regarding negotiations, you'll see on the agenda, we have a couple of contracts coming forward from Food Service and the ISPEC Group. We're waiting, we have a tentative agreement and are waiting on votes with the Duluth Federation of Teachers as well as the Pear Professionals. And we anticipate that those will be voted on and come forward in our April meeting. And then with our other groups, we've been meeting with the Duluth Principal Association as well as our Directors Unit. And we have other openers and work going on with our other bargaining groups. So, those are all moving forward pretty quickly. We, we're basically taking them on as much as time can allow right now because it takes a little bit of time and Director Severance is doing an excellent job, as is the entire team that's working on those negotiations. So, we're pretty happy about those progress points. But we're always looking for, how can we improve those situations? Having, you know, weekly meetings with the president of the Duluth Federation of Teachers. I met yesterday with Judith McKeever from the Pear Professionals and really making sure that we're having those structured but somewhat informal opportunities in addition to the labor management process, which we've been working on as well. Related to the Safe Learning Plan updates, it's kind of nice because we don't have very much on Safe Learning Plan, other than relatively, you know, good news. You've seen the principals many times and I'm sure you probably can't wait to not see them again at some point. But our COVID rates, take a look at those rates. That rate in orange is the rate that I reported at our last meeting when we were moving downward. We were at 143 per 10,000. And right now, our projected rate for this week is 19 per 10,000. So, that's a really nice improvement to see in the community. And as you know, we're in the green low transmission zone as indicated by the CDC. And because of that, we anticipate that we'll be remaining in an opportunity where we do not need to require masks for the foreseeable future. But we do want to make sure that we're monitoring. We haven't seen any major increases of spread, partly because the transmission rates are incredibly low. But we're also making sure that we're reinforcing for students and families and staff that there are a variety of opinions on, you know, and sentiments from individuals. And we want to support everybody, no matter what their decision. If they're choosing to wear a mask or if they're choosing not to wear a mask, we want to make sure that we're supportive and creating an environment that is welcoming to all. And again, we go over these many times, but really just continue to make sure that we're staying boosted, we're masking when needed and staying home when sick. We do have cases here and there and making sure that we're not forgetting about COVID and making sure that if we have symptoms, that we're checking things out and being tested. So, that's it on COVID for this particular monthly report. Strategic planning. We have several steps moving forward in the next few days and weeks. Tomorrow, we have our World's Best Workforce Advisory Team meeting, giving us input on our draft World's Best Workforce Report. And then we'll be sharing that at the Committee of the Whole on April 5th, I believe is the date of the sharing of that report. And then we're working on the date for the board retreat as either March 30th or April 7th. So, those are the two dates that we've been looking at and we're hoping to make a decision soon on that so we can lock in. And then our planning, the planning process is really intense. It's going to be something that's going to require a lot of work over the course of the next few months with a lot of stakeholders, teachers, non-certified staff, parents, families, really to get their perspectives on, you know, what is our current reality? Also just helping describe what our vision is, thinking about, you know, what daily experiences do our students want? What daily experiences do our families want? And what daily experiences do our families want? And we'll be going into that in much greater depth on the 30th or on the 7th. And then we set, we'll be setting our strategic plan in place with a three-year operational plan. Right now, we have a one-year operational plan, which is basically serving in a very similar function as what the three-year plan will look like. It'll have more progress monitoring with the school board and be an update that we can focus on on a regular basis. We'll have school improvement plans. And then it's also recommended that we work on a three-year board agenda for things that we want to work on as a board. So, like laying out, what do we want to do with our policy committee? Or what things do we want to work on related to governance? Or what do we want our monitoring process to look like as we move forward? So, all those are things that we'll be talking about as we meet at our next retreat. And that concludes my formal report. I do want to say that it's been really nice to, our team has been working on some things related to climate and culture. We're doing a book study on the culture code, which has been really informative and something focused on really helping us as we're coming out of COVID, hopefully to focus on the relationship building, the trust building, really thinking about how do we make sure that people feel safe? People feel that they belong and that they have a future together. So, I think that's really important for us to start and model from the district level. And on a personal note, I know I mentioned I was putting in an offer on a house, but I was beat out by somebody that outbid by $70,000. So, that's the housing market in Duluth. But please know that I am working hard to try to become a resident homeowner as well as, so that's just the way things are in Duluth sometimes. But appreciate everything and appreciate my team as well as our teachers and everybody else who's working on behalf of our kids and especially our students.
Questions from the board? Okay.
Oh. That's all what Ann called.
Oh, okay. You know, Member Laffler Kemp's screen is kind of right on yours. So, Member Crawford?
I'm sorry, but I was wondering, you know, when they gave public comments, when does a discussion about them happen?
So, you know, when does that discussion? The three topics that were kind of discussed were all kind of within, I would think, the teacher and the staff. So, I would hope that our HR director would, you know, reach out or they would. We've listened and so they're going to take those comments back. And if we know, if we think as a board, we would want them to give us some reaction. We got a nice handout on the elementary prep time that as board members, we certainly can look at and they're going to share with us some ideas or some things they've been talking about. And so, that team will lead the conversation. So, it's not that, nothing from the public comment, whether it was tonight's staff or community people, they're always kind of responded to and shared and, you know, they work on different things. And this might come back in a, maybe a union timeframe within those units, whether it's elementary, whether it's clerical, whether it's a teacher. So, that's where I think that will go. Quality Steering Committee probably meets and has a conversation on those topics.
And I think too, sometimes if, sometimes public comment feels a little bit odd because we're not, we're not able to respond to it. Basically, it has to be on the agenda for us to be able to discuss or ask questions or have that comment. And sometimes it leaves you feeling like, well, how come we're not answering the question right here and now? And so, that's something that is, we need to make sure that we're continuing those conversations as we need to. And that's one thing about public comment is it's, sometimes it feels like there are questions left unanswered within the meeting.
That was a great question, though.
Yeah.
And that's also what happens with your presentations, student presentations. What we do is, you know, we make sure we connect back with our school principals and others and make sure that information is shared there. So, while there's not a lot of responses back to your questions or our concerns and your sharing, we do take that information back and have discussions with building leaders.
Just like we change action based on what we hear from public comment, there have also been multiple times that we've changed our processes and procedures based on what we hear from you, too.
Member Laffler Kemp, I saw your hand up. Did you want to share?
Well, yeah, I was just going to add, thank you for asking that question. The way we do public comment is very similar to how school boards all across the country and all across the state is, they don't respond. It's not meant to be a dialogue. It's meant to be for us to hear any concerns that are brought forward.
Any other questions based off of the reports? I mean, of course, we've been talking about strategic planning and what we're doing going forward since we hired Superintendent Magus. So, I'm glad that we've gotten through some of the more challenging issues that have come forward because of COVID and can move ahead. I know that you've been working with other entities within your administrative team on strategic planning and we look forward to an opportunity either March 30th or April 7th. And I think you got an email about, you know, what that date looks like and between Superintendent Magus and I will get you that date. If you have anything you want to send with me, email about either one of those dates, you know, you can certainly reach out to me. Rosie.
Sorry, I had one more question for Superintendent Magus. Can you share with us, you don't need to do it tonight, but maybe through an email, who is serving as the community representatives with the World's Best Workforce?
Sure. And Assistant Superintendent Bonds has put that committee together and I'll make sure that I work with him to provide that information to the board. Absolutely be pleased to do so.
Seeing no other questions, we'll continue. Thanks to Superintendent Magus. So, our next item on our agenda is our number nine. It's report of standing committees. Our first committee report comes from the Committee of the Whole, which was held on March 1st, 2022. And I'll just ask briefly Assistant Superintendent Bonds to review that brief.
It's a very brief report out because we had two items and one was tabled. And so, we did receive an update from Nate Smith, our Coordinator of Educational Equity. He provided an update to the EAC Educational Committee. And we tabled at that point in time our concurrence and non-concurrence report and that will be coming at our next county meeting. So, that ends my report.
Thank you. Any questions on our Committee of the Whole and the presentation from Nate Smith? I know that's a concern with the April 7th date, is that's an EAC meeting date. And I appreciate if you think, you know, that might be okay to put the workshop on that date and miss that meeting. But we're also very aware that EAC is an important committee. So, we'll look at that. Moving on to 9B, it's the Human Resource and Business Services Committee Report that was held on March 7th, and that is Chair Eater.
Thank you. So, the business, HR Business Committee, that's CFO Erickson, that's the new, Business Services?
Yes.
Okay. So, the name is HR and Business Services Committee. That was held on the 7th and we got started at 5 o'clock. So, the first thing that we have are our departmental reports. Let me just get where I need to be. And so, we talked about first was the HR Human Resources Update from Director Severance. And she had a great summary report, looked at the staffing hires, both in certified and non-certified staff, new hires, retirements, resignations and leave of absences. She also talked about an HR department update with benefits that had a student loan and debt management services that is going to be, I hope, widely used by our staff. Right? And then that is a free service to our employees in our school district. Next, she talked about our hiring updates and the current openings as of Friday, March 4th. I'm sure these openings have changed and there's way fewer than there was in that meeting.
Really?
I wish. No.
Oh, no.
So, just so the public knows, we have a lot of need for food service, which would help some of the problems at East. I know I've heard from some parents at Lincoln Park as well. Also, Pear Professionals were really looking to hire more Pear Professionals. And I've been, I'm happy and impressed with what the district is doing to try to get people to come in and take those jobs and interview. We will be looking at some resolutions later on that will be pulled off the consent agenda. Clerk Oswald informed us and is helping us clarify how we run meetings and resolutions will be pulled off of consent agendas and will be voted on separately. Correct? All right. Thank you for that, Clerk Oswald. So, today we're going to be, today we have resolutions and contracts from the Integration Specialists and from the Food Service employees. And hopefully, next school board meeting, we will have the Pear Professionals as well.
Teachers.
And the teachers, yes, and the teachers, right? Okay. And I believe, did I catch everything there? Okay, great. And then next, we moved on to Business Services with CFO Erickson. We learned a lot about the student activity fees and how through an MDE mandate, we've had to go through and change the accounting and the distribution and how we do student activity fees. And I want to thank Simone. She has gone out to the schools and done education and she's also gathering feedback and helping to make adjustments to that system. So, I think that that's been helpful to show responsiveness to the building. We also talked about our budget timeline. So, the first draft of this budget, and correct me if I'm wrong, CFO, you're like hiding behind a big.
A call, yeah.
Yeah, a big call. Correct me if I'm wrong, CFO Erickson, but we will, the first draft of the budget to the board will be the 26th of April. And then we will have some pow meetings in May to revise the budget. And hopefully, not hopefully, we will have a budget to adopt on June 19th.
Yes.
Great, okay. So, next, we talked about March enrollments and we've adjusted our enrollment numbers from 8,180 to about 8,006 as an average ADM. And this, even though we revised the ADM numbers down, we will have to make those budget adjustments. Correct, CFO? Great, okay. Sue, next, we then talked about the Child Nutrition Department. And I really, we talked a lot about, we need food service workers. And we also have been having some supply chain issues in our child nutrition, but you can see that we look at that report for more detail. Next, we talked about facilities. Let me just catch up to where I'm at here. As usual, my mouth is moving faster than my brain. We are on facilities in the update. There was some, at Public School Stadium, they're looking at some, Lane One has some ponding, so they're going to make sure to look through and get that fixed. And then we had the announcement that Saturday Heights had stopped the purchase on Central on the Hill. But I just want to make a comment that I am, and I think I can speak for quite a few members of the school board, that we are grateful as a school board that CFO Erickson, that former board member Trinka and that Superintendent Magus and Assistant Superintendent Magus made sure that we as a district, as we went through that process, were making sure to protect the interest and the financial business of the district. So, I want to thank all of you for that. And I truly believe we are in a better position to move that property than when we started. So, I have faith in the process and we've weathered bigger problems. So, I think we can handle this as well. So, that's what I have for facilities. Don't think I'm missing anything else. Next, we moved on to technology. Talked a little bit about cybersecurity and that our technology department is making sure that our students and our staff and our technology infrastructure is safe. There was some bids that have gone out. Talked a little bit about technology helped us tickets. And I believe, Bart, those are, you're able to move some of those tickets. You're.
They're processing every year.
Yeah, they're processing, and their processing time seems to be getting a little better?
Yes.
Yeah. So, that's great. Good job. We have some projects, CDWG for a blended learning initiative. We also, this does have some budget implications, correct, CFO Erickson? Okay. And then we are also, as usual, waiting on those smart boards right now for our elementary school teachers. We have a lot of the pieces that we need for smart boards, but I believe we're missing a, literally like a cord or something like that. Correct?
All the AV connections.
Yep.
And they're expected first week of April.
Okay, everybody knock on wood for that. Okay, first week of April. That's awesome. Okay, great news. I'm sure our teachers are excited for that. Okay, then we move on for our transportation. And the great news coming out of transportation is field trips and activities are back on. So, we'll see some implication in transportation. So far, they've had 75 trips happen in February and. So far, they've had 75 trips happen in February and 31 scheduled for March, and that is awesome that our kids are getting back out. I'm so, so happy to hear that. There's still some staffing issues, of course, COVID mandates, and they have been switched on the bus, looked at bus maintenance, our fleet, average fleet age, and then some other issues that had to do with transportation. Okay. Moving on. So we have some bids that we will have to look at. Oh, fundraisers, sorry. We've had fundraisers. Where am I at? Okay, so the next, we have a couple recommended resolutions that have to do with approval of a couple collective bargaining agreements, and then also acceptance of donations and acceptance of grants, and I'd encourage you to go on and look to see what great work we're having done through grants and also the generosity of our public through their donations to our schools. On our consent agenda, we'll see HR staffing, some finance budget revisions, and then some also fundraiser. We also have some bids, and 4C1 is a bid for network wireless infrastructure. And is that the bid that's around $852,000, CFO Erickson? Great. So this is a bid that we are looking at with CDW, and that's about $852,000. We will be approving that. Then we have some contracts, change orders, some other things, district property update, expenditure, no cost. And I think I covered everything. CFO Erickson, did I miss anything?
You didn't.
Thank you. Great. Are there any questions?
Yes.
I just have a quick question on blended learning. And that's been on hold since beginning of the year or since fall, correct?
Some aspects of the blended learning in terms of instructional expectations for our teachers. That piece has been on hold, but the implementation and usage of our devices, meaning the handing in, issuing of our home books to our students and so forth, that has preceded any other behind-the-scenes needs in that area that continue. But what was pressed pause on was the expectations of teachers implementing certain lessons.
Do we have a target date, month for launching that, or are we just looking at the beginning of next year?
Beginning of next year.
Okay. How are we utilizing the staff then? We've hired a fair number of staff to help launch this program. How are they being utilized right now with blended learning on pause?
In a number of ways in the building, they are supporting the other technology and needs of teachers. But you also have to realize, we purchased a number of devices, so there's a lot of device management that's needed. We also are trying to make sure that at the end of this year, we have a really smooth process for collection of the devices. At the end of the year, we have a lot of students who have devices at home. As you recall, there was a number of devices not returned last year, and so they have been actively searching for some of those devices. So we've been utilizing them in a number of ways to make sure we use them in an efficient manner, so that resource has not gone.
But I certainly don't want to see us have to let them go or try to be hiring these people. But it's just, can we, are there other tasks that they can, have been filling in?
Yes.
Helping media specialists or working one-on-one with teachers, if, I mean, supporting technology within the building.
Yes, and that's what they've been doing in a variety of ways.
I would also say that we want to commend those individuals because quite often, they've been the most forward in wanting to volunteer for substituting in the classroom when the need is there. You know, Mr. Bobey, for instance, I think every single time that there's been a need, if he's asked, he gladly comes out to Denville, gladly goes out to East, no matter where it is. So we are using them for their intended purpose, but they're also quite often readily stepping in in other ways, too.
Okay, thank you.
Member Oswald.
I have a question for HR Director Severance.
Hi.
Wait back there. With April 1st approaching fast, have we been getting any retirement notices? And do we have any estimates on numbers of retirees yet?
We've received maybe three to four. We haven't told people first to advise, and we've been talking to principals this week as well in budget meetings to see if they have any knowledge of additional retirements. I would expect that we probably will have less than 10.
That's interesting. That's good to know. I'm glad people aren't wanting to flee and that we're, I hope that we continue to be supportive of our teachers and their abilities.
And I, too, just want to appreciate Director Severance, your HR Board summary is really informative and easy to follow, and if our community is accessing our board book, they're able to see the vacancies, the retirements, the needs, who's resigned, who's been hired. And I like that data, so thank you. I also want to thank, since Kim Ledoux is here right now, and I know you shared with us the student activity fee and how that's going, and certainly with Simone and Sheila Stevens and CFO Erickson, but I know that I'm directly working with Kim Ledoux a lot on my activity fee requirements on the speech team, and so I just know what a heavy lift that is when you're short-staffed, but I appreciate it a lot. So I just want to highlight, I know that one of the things we're struggling with the most, or not the most, we're not struggling the most with this, is that when we do get donations, because we put it on the consent agenda, at times, the Minnesota School Board Association says, you know, it's a nice opportunity to recognize the donations. So that is also in board book, and we had over $2,800 of donations, and then throw in some in-kind winter clothing or other needs, so over $2,800 just this month in donations. And we also have two grants totaling $2,000 that members of our community have applied for, so we appreciate that, too.
And that is the HR Business Services Committee Report for March.
Thank you. Seeing no other further questions, I'm going to turn to Chair Lachler Kemp of the Policy Committee.
Great, thank you. I hope you can hear me.
You're a bit loud. Can you turn your volume on your computer down a bit?
Oh.
It's an R.
Oh, is it an R?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, because.
You're coming in loud and clear.
Thank you. That's because I'm 80. Okay. I am 8,500 feet in the air right now, so that could be why I'm so loud. Next peak, so that's where I am. But thank you all for allowing me to be with my family and do the meeting this way. I appreciate your support, board members and administration. We had our Policy Committee meeting on Thursday, March 3, and again, I want to appreciate and thank Member Sandholm and Member Sadowski for being a part of this committee. We have one policy that was brought forward, and it's also on the consent agenda. This is for our first reading, and it's Policy 110, Duluth Public Schools Website Accessibility Policy. And this is a policy that we adopted in August of 2018. It's a mandatory policy to be reviewed. Appreciated Director of Special Education Crane being available for questions and to review the importance of this policy and making sure our website is accessible for all, which is really the purpose of the policy. It also, the policy goes over the accessibility, and also if there are concerns, complaints, and grievances, how to file those. So this is, again, a first reading, and it will be on the consent agenda. We did not have any policies for a second reading. And then in other, we talked about the calendar that administration is putting together right now to bring forward more groups of policies over the next few months. We have nine different areas that we have policies in, so nine different series, and so we are working to bring more groups of policies together at one time. Am I echoing? Okay, I'm echoing here. So we will be reviewing, I know administration has been working to put that draft together. We'll be reviewing it more next month. And then also in the other category, we did have an update from Superintendent Magus about the face covering policy that we had given direction and empowered him to be able to make that decision when we would remove face coverings in our schools. And so, as we heard already, March 7 was when we lifted the required face coverings, but we are still encouraging staff and students to wear them if they choose. The other piece I just wanted to mention is next month, our policy meeting is going to be on Tuesday, April 5. As a committee, we want to try and do the policy meeting on the same day as our Committee of the Whole meeting, and so we're going to start it at 3:30 on Tuesday, April 5. So that is our report for this month, unless there are any questions.
Are there questions concerning, this is the first time, I think, as a full board, we've talked or heard about combining our Policy Committee and then our Committee of the Whole following that. It has been discussed as a board that we would like our Committee of the Whole to start at 4:30, like we were doing before our move out of Hox. So I think the Policy Committee, when they met, kind of had this idea. Is there any questions or discussion?
Well, I think we kind of had that discussion with administration, and it kind of went through them, too.
Yes, it did, yeah.
And it was, you know, some of the intent was to just be efficient with our time and the number of meetings, days that we're meeting for everybody, and so that was some of the thinking behind it.
And so that's what we're going to do going forward.
We're going to give it a try for now, and we assume that it will work, but if it doesn't work, then we would look at shifting again. But I think that this will give us good structure, it'll allow for us to move through things, but also to limit the number of meetings that everybody has. I'd also say thanks to the committee and thanks to Member Lachler Kemp in the work that we've done with Ms. Puckett and the rest of us on putting together and working on a calendar of how we're going to address swaths of the policy work that need to be done over time so that we can update the policies with the MSBA guidance and other things that are needed to make sure that we're caught up on our policies. I think that the past, you know, two years have been somewhat of a challenge to make sure that, policy is always very important, but not often urgent, and so I think that now that we're in a different place, we can focus on that more deeply.
Thank you.
That ends the Policy Committee Report. Thanks, Chair Lachler Kemp. That brings us to number 10, our Consent Agenda. And because we are looking more at resolutions under number 11, anything on the consent agenda has things like approval of our minutes, approval of some action items in HR. It has our finance and our bids and our change orders that we've looked at already in committee and again tonight. We have approval of the policy reading on here, at least for the first reading, so I encourage us, if you have any questions about a policy, to get back to Chair Lachler Kemp. And again, on our consent agenda is just the approval of these committees that we just heard from. So I'm looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So move.
I have a motion by Member Eater and a second by Member Lachler Kemp. All those in favor of?
I have a comment. I need to ask to remove the resolutions after. Bart, isn't that dumb? It's, approval of resolutions is an action item on 1B on the consent agenda.
Is it? I don't. Is it here? Because it comes in consent agenda, and I don't.
Oh, this right here. Approval of resolutions.
It's on the consent agenda.
Got it. Okay, so do we then have to take that B off permanently?
I'm imagining.
Okay.
I don't know.
But there's nothing listed there.
There's nothing listed under anything else, either.
Oh, yeah, I totally agree. I just don't, so we should look at getting the approval of resolutions pulled off that?
So I'm looking for a motion to pull off of the consent agenda, lender B, approval of resolution.
1B, yeah. That's what I was motioning.
So to be or not to be, that is the question?
That's right.
Absolutely.
Does that have me?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Right. I'm looking for a motion to.
I just made that motion, yes.
I'm looking for a second. Okay. All those in favor of removal of B, approval of resolution off of the consent agenda? 1B, say aye.
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 Opposed? It is now off the consent, so now I'm looking for, we have a motion to accept the consent agenda. I'm looking for, and we have a second, so all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda with the removal of B, say aye.
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 Opposed? Consent agenda is carried. Looking at number 11, these are our special resolutions.
We still have to vote on all of these?
Yes, I know. Yeah, I got them all, and they're under 11, so we're going to vote on them.
Oh, I thought that was part of.
No, we moved them to number 11, special resolutions and action items.
We did move them, but okay.
They're on there twice, unfortunately.
Oh, that's why.
That's why I'm confused.
Where else are they listed? Alana, where are you seeing them?
They were in the HR Business Committee.
Well, that's because that's the review of the committee.
And they are on the regular board meeting. Item number 11 has carried forward.
That's my fault. I meant to point that out, that we pulled some stuff, and I didn't do a very good job, so that's on me. Okay, got it.
We're all figuring about it, it's okay.
No, it's okay, I'm just trying to, for my own thought process.
Not to continue this conundrum, but they were listed under the Committee of HR because they discussed them at the committee, so that's why they're there, and they should stay there, and they're on number 11, so we're good. So I'm looking at number 8, HR-3-22-3875, Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreement Between Independent School District Number 709 and Education Minnesota Duluth Integration Specialist ISPECT of Duluth, Minnesota. I'm looking for a motion to approve this resolution.
So move.
And is there a second?
Second.
So Member Eater has moved, Member Sadowski is a second. All those in favor of approval of collective bargaining agreement between School District 709 and Education Minnesota Duluth, we've got, we were emailed a complete contract of that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, I get to use this again. Okay, number B, HR-3-22-3873. This is a resolution to approve food service, right, food service employees, so resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the collective bargaining agreement between Independent School District 709 and the food service employees, a summary of which has been provided electronically to all school board members, be approved. I'm looking for a motion. Member Lachler Kemp has made the motion to approve. Member Sandholm is the second. Any discussion? All those in favor of this resolution, HR-3-22-3873, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Moving on to resolution, this one, the resolution is SP-3-22-3879. And just for reference, on the printed resolution, the resolution has the wrong one, but on our board book, on the official, it is right, but it's 3878, and it's right on Member Oswald, Clerk Oswald's list, so. on the official, it is right, but it's 3878, and it's right on Member Oswald, Clerk Oswald's list, so we're good to go with this resolution. Board member attendance at Duluth and St. Louis County Days at the Capitol, resolved that Independent School District 709 of St. Louis County, Minnesota, pay costs incurred as per district policy for school board members to attend the Duluth and St. Louis County Days at the Capitol that was held just last week in 2022. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion.
Member Sandholm is the approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All those in favor of this resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The following resolution is Board Member Attendance at MSBA Phase 3 and Phase 4 Workshops, resolved that Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, pay costs incurred as per district policy for school board members to attend the MSBA Phase 3 and Phase 4 Workshops. This is Resolution SP-3-22-3879? Do I have a motion to approve this resolution? I make that motion.
Second.
And Member Sadowski seconds that motion. Any discussion? I just want to share with you that I highly encourage you to sign up for Phase 3 or Phase 4. Those workshops, I think, are still open for registration. Phase 3 is called Building a High Performance School Board Team, and Phase 4 is called Representing Your Community Through Policy and Engagement. So those are Phase 3 and Phase 4. If you've taken them already, you can take them again. It's always good with the, with the education we've gotten being on the board for a couple of years, every one of those still is something to be learned, so I would encourage you to sign up.
I was just going to add, thank you to Patty for all your help getting registered for those courses.
So that's Resolution SP-3-22-3879. All those in favor of that resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? That motion carries, and I believe this is, is this our last one?
No, we skipped two.
I skipped two, okay. Oh, the donations. Okay, I pulled those because I wanted to make such a nice comment. So we'll go to those. So Resolution 3-22-3876, this is the resolution for our, for our acceptance of donations. And again, I've kind of highlighted those, so do I have a motion to accept Resolution 3-22-3876? Member Kirby moves. Member Sandholm seconds. All those in favor of accepting our donation, say, oh, any discussion? This is probably where I should have said discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Our resolution for donations passes. Our next resolution is B-3. I'm keeping you going. B-3-22-3877, this is the resolution, the acceptance of grant awards to the Duluth Public Schools. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution? Member Sandholm makes the motion. Do I have a second? Member Kirby seconds. That's the motion to accept grant awards. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, too. Now, our last resolution is a resolutions SP-3-22-3880. And that is a resolution for board members attendance at the Inclusive School Board Leadership Workshop. Resolved that the Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, pay costs incurred as per district policy for school board members to attend the Inclusive School Board Leadership Workshops. Do I have a motion?
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Member Eater makes the motion. Member Sadowski is the second. Is there any discussion questions on this? This is the opportunity through MSBA, but in a connection with a company called Kinsect? Connect?
Connect.
Connect, it's the one we did at MSBA.
Yep, there was one there.
Okay, okay. Is anybody signing up for that?
I signed up for it.
Good, yeah.
Yep, I took the first one. It had to do with data and policy in Work for Equity. It was really good.
I was really glad to see it co-sponsored with MSBA, because I was getting some information from it, but I didn't know much about the company, and I did not go to the session at MSBA conference, then obviously.
We worked together.
Oh, we did. There was a lot of conferences. So thank you.
All of that one.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of Resolution SP-3-22-3880, say aye? Opposed? That motion carries.
I have a, I have a field trip request listed on here. Do we have those somewhere? There's no policy number, or there's no resolution number attached to it or anything like that?
It's not a resolution, it's just an action item, because normally they go to committee of the whole, but since we bypassed that because we made that decision to be able to go on extended field trips. And so we wanted it to get approved because it's coming up so quickly now that they have permission to go. Okay, so it's just under, that's why it's, I thought it was just an action.
Yeah, so then it probably could have stayed on the consent agenda that way.
Oh, I thought everything on the consent agenda came through a committee, and so that's why I put it on this one.
Whatever, I'm just saying, it's, I guess, you vote on it separately, but normally everything that gets voted on separately has a separate board number on it, so you can record it. So it can be looked up and referenced, that's all.
Well, you can teach, you can help me with that.
I can be wrong, too.
I was just saying, it had to be approved, so I'm like, get it on there, and I'll be happy to discuss it with you to figure out the proper way to do it.
Yeah, looks good.
I would just say, I'm just really glad to hear that students are getting to go on field trips, and that's really great.
And they're going back to Wolf Ridge. That's exciting, because I haven't been there in a couple of years. That's awesome.
So this is for our, one of our elementaries, Lakewood?
Yep.
To go to Wolf Ridge.
Should we be expecting others, maybe?
Doesn't every elementary send her?
Not every. Most do. They usually fundraise throughout the year to do that, and so I don't know if everybody's even fundraising.
And this year, because of our timing, unfortunately, many of our schools missed the opportunity to have overnight, but they were able to go to the day portion, so moving forward, there will be additional overnight opportunities.
That's great.
For extended learning.
Because Wolf Ridge is, that's really a lot of kids, and it's great, so I'm so excited to see this for Lakewood students.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the field trip request? Members, Member Sandholm makes the motion. Member Sadowski is the second. All those in favor of the field trip request, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. They get to go to Wolf Ridge. They'll be like 40-degree days. We are down to number 12, questions and others. Is there any questions or other tonight?
I have an other item. I just wanted to say that I was looking at the calendar, and it was actually exactly two years ago this week that I had my first interview with the Duluth Public Schools School Board. It was a semifinalist interview, and just wanted to say how grateful I am to have had this fun and challenging two years. My hair is a little more gray, and, but I think it's been, it's been a challenging but very rewarding experience, and I just wanted to say thanks for that initial opportunity as I reflect on it.
As, as we all do, because I can remember sitting in the parking lot, taking a phone call from our, our consulting firm that was helping us select our next, and they were talking about whether or not we were doing these in person, or, and it was, it was really, it was not March 20th yet, so it was like, well, why wouldn't we be flying these people in? It's like, hmm, maybe we should be thinking about another way of doing that, so, yeah.
Thank you.
So that's a nice other. We're glad to be two years there. Anything else? I'm looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Member Oswald is making the motion. Is there a second? Member Sandholm is the second. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye? Those opposed? Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.